Today is April tenth, twenty twenty-five. It is now seventy. And, uh, Debbie, just a pretty small roll.
Here.
All right, we have court. Everyone here please stand for the pledge.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our.
Move on to approving tonight's agenda. Council, any questions about tonight's agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move we approve tonight's agenda, striking item eleven, executive session.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion by Todd, second by Karen. All in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Carrie's four oh. Move on to approving the consent agenda. Council, any questions about tonight's consent agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve of the consent agenda.
Do I have a second? I have a motion by Karen. Second by Todd. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's four oh. Move on to the communication section. Um, looks like we have civic groups or committees. Um, any civic groups or committees here to speak? Seeing none, but I would remind everybody now and later that the Easter egg scrambler did get moved because of the rain last week. So it's now on Saturday. Um, we did move the time a little bit because of the church having their Easter egg event at the same time. So theirs is from one to two, and ours is now two thirty to when we run out of candy. So probably about thirty minutes. Um, candy goes pretty quick for the kids. So, um, that's my little plug for the Kechai Fair group. Um, move on to Kechai Good News. Um, any Kechai good news from council?
I have some.
Awesome.
Good. So the, I own the Kechai Cottage Airbnb here in town, and we just hosted our la- or our first wedding last weekend. Um, so that was pretty exciting. Uh, it was a family from Wichita that just came and with their very small group and just out hosted their ceremony there, and then they got to stay the night. So awesome, pretty cool.
Any other Kechai good news? Well, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a very large Bradford pear in front of my house, and it comes off in five different stalks. It's been there for over twenty-five years. And, uh, one of the stalks fell right in front of my garage, so I got the day off.
That happens. Any other Kechai good news? Um, it looks like during our Kechai good news, we do our drawing, right? So, um, we could not find our little rack thing tonight, so we have a bag.
Or did you do?
Bucket.
Okay.
The bucket. We have a bucket.
And I think the mayor for a day should help me with this if you wouldn't mind. I'll hold the bucket. This is as professional as we get here. Ken, reach. No cheating. All right. We're meeting up.
Richard R. Jovi's.
Sure. You guys can contact him.
Yep.
That'd be great. No? Oh, yes, I was like, no.
No, we can't.
There you go. Congratulations to him. All right. Next, we have our Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation.
Whereas prevention is possible with the right policies and investments, family and children can thrive and avoid contact with child welfare and other costly systems. And whereas the early experience of child impacts them throughout their lives, both positively and negatively. Whereas every family and child is filled with tremendous promise, and we all have a collective responsibility to prevent adverse childhood experiences, foster the potential of every child, and promote positive childhood experiences. And whereas positive childhood experiences, PCEs, such as loving caregivers and safe, stable, and nurturing relationships, play a vital role in helping children thrive by mitigating trauma and the negative impact of adverse childhood experiences. Ases. And whereas families who receive the support they need before a crisis occurs are better equipped to provide safe, healthy, and nurturing environments, leading to children who are safer, healthier, and more hopeful about their futures. And whereas childhood trauma includes abuse and neglect can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects throughout an individual's lifetime and impact future generations. And whereas primary prevention of child abuse and neglect can reduce the lifetime economic burden associated with child maltreatment. And whereas strengthening families through access to concrete, economic, social, and community-based supports reduces the likelihood of abuse and neglect, and ensures children have the foundation for lifelong well-being. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. Whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. Whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promoting the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, nurturing environment. Whereas investments in prevention initiatives such as home visiting programs, family strengthening policies, economic supports, and community-based child abuse prevention efforts are essential to building safer, healthier communities for children and families. And whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Ashley Coleman, Mayor of Kechai, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-five as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Kechai. Urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving quality of life for all children and families. Together, we can create a state where every child can grow happy, healthy, and safe with hope for their future. And I want to recognize Rachel Harper from KCSL or Kansas Children's Service League.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Coleman, Mayor for the Day, and council members for inviting us here today and for signing the proclamation recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. I'm Rachel Harper, the Assistant Director of the Prevent Child Abuse Kansas Chapter at Kansas Children's Service League. And Kansas was the first state to have its own chapter forty-nine years ago. April has been recognized as Child Abuse Prevention Month since nineteen eighty-three. And the blue pinwheel, which all of the council members have, became the symbol for child abuse prevent aid. The pinwheel represents the happy, healthy childhoods that we all desire to see. And every year, KCSL coordinates statewide activities and offers support to local community efforts to help spread awareness, foster community action, and promote policies that ensure the safety and well-being of children and families. The theme for Child Abuse Prevention Month this year is powered by this fact. Um, and so if you'd like, you can reach out to Kansas Children's Service League for other events that we have going on through the month, and also follow us on social media, where we will use the hashtag powered by hope for all Child Abuse Prevention Month posts. At this time, I'd like to have other agencies that are here to represent Child Abuse Prevention Month stand up and introduce yourselves and the agency you're with.
I'm Lori Chandler, and I'm with the Child Advocacy Center of San Diego.
Elizabeth Gray, I'm with the Kansas Department for Children and Families. I'm the Assistant Regional Director for our Wichita region.
She's also my boss.
Thank you.
I want to get a picture with all of you if you will. And then I want to switch out this chair because it keeps making me short. Thank you guys for your support. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
I was just gonna say a couple things, but you guys can leave if you want. Thanks, bye. Um, I was just gonna say that, um, KCSL has done an amazing job, uh, with coordinating all of these proclamations. Um, to date, we have nine proclamations. About half of those have been completed. We have a couple more on Monday that we have to do. So in coordination with them, that's been great. So I want to call out Derby, Wichita did one twice. Congratulations to them, they're big time. Um, Cedric County did one, Kechai obviously just did ours, Park City, Mays, Hazel, and Mount Hope. Uh, so Hazel and Mount Hope are both on Monday, so we will be participating in those. Um, we also, as Kechai, if you hadn't noticed, um, we changed our water tower color to blue. So we will keep that blue until the end of April, um, to promote Child Abuse Prevention Month. So I just wanted to give that call out to everybody, and so thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. I want to do one more thing for this. I want to present William with his actual mayor for a day certificate, um, since he didn't get one the last time he was here. Uh, I wanted to make sure he got it at his official day. So, William. We just had a lot of Kechai good news tonight, so. All right, we'll move on to public comment. Do you have any public comment?
Joanie Harris.
Okay. I was not prepared, Joanie.
That's okay.
You are good?
Great. Joanie Harris, one oh nine, West Chippewa Street. You guys all know my address right now. Um, Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for being here tonight and the opportunity to speak. Um, I'm gonna talk about the water rate analysis. I have some questions coming up discussion, as well as the Wichita, um, water rate agreement. So in reading over the supplemental report, I just had a couple of questions that I'm hoping that you would have addressed during your discussion time. Um, one of the things it talks about, um, is on page three, it talks about, um, system improvement costs. Um, and those are, uh, what are the expensive system improvements that are needed that are affected by this rate? And what are the improvements specifically? Is it additional staff for public works? Is there infrastructure needs that we have with our water system? Those are just questions that I have, and I'm looking at this report. And then secondly, going over to page six with the water rates, model one proposed, um, rate increases. Um, the base rate is an increase of twenty-two percent. The first level water usage is an eighteen percent increase. The second level is thirty-eight percent increase, and the third level is a seventy percent increase in the rates. Um, so what I'm, and reading through this as well, um, it says that initially there's a rate increase, which is what is proposed in this model. And then secondly, in number four on page six, it states that when you analyze your budget each year, if you're making your target, what you're looking at, you would repeat the recommendation of number three each following year until you've raised the rates and the fees by a cumulative twenty percent. So what I'm understanding, and I'd like to have clarified, is that it looks like you would be proposing a two percent increase for the next ten years on top of what the proposed rate increases are in this table. So I just like, would like to have clarification for that when you go into that discussion. And then in addition, um, are those Wichita water rate increases are gonna be on top of these rate increases that you're looking at, putting, um, forward to the city? The rates, there was a rate change for the Wichita water, January first, twenty twenty-five. Number one, I'd like to know what those rates are, um, that you're gonna be talking about this evening. And according to resolution sixteen dash six five zero, from January fourteenth, two thousand, two thousand and sixteen, um, those rates are automatically always passed through to the Wichita water customers. So that means any rate increases by the city of Wichita would automatically be passed through. So therefore, is that on top of what this table is showing? So on top of all those I just talked about, is the water rate increase gonna be on top of that as well for Wichita directly? Um, and then, um, other question I would like to have answered is, if it's possible, were the known future developments that are already happening in Kechai, were they forecasted and included in this report relating to the funding of utilities and to build reserves? And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Any others? We will go ahead and close public comment.
The next item on the agenda is number seven, new business. All right, and now for our water rate analyst discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Carl Brown is with us tonight. He is on your screens up there at the council bench. Is he not on there yet? Okay, we'll get him there. Is he not on there? They said they can't see him. He's, he's on our big screen up here, though. So Carl, we can see you. Uh, they just cannot see you.
You can now?
Yes, we can, yeah.
Okay.
So Carl is the author of the analysis that was done for our water and sewer rates. He did the original analysis back in nineteen twenty, uh, through those years.
Twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty. I'm sorry.
It's been a long.
Yeah, I'm going on thirteen hours today. So, uh, yes, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Um, the sewer rates were changed at that time. However, the recommendation to change our water rates were not adopted at that time. So that is why we are looking at those now. That's been addressed at other council meetings. Rather than myself and staff sitting here trying to explain how he came up with these rates, Carl is truly the guru of water rates, and very eloquently is able to explain why he came up with the figures he did and what goes into those figures. So with that, Carl, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, hey, thank you. Can you all hear me fine?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I'm gonna start off, first of all, by saying, uh, I think it was set up because you have the mayor for the day and child abuse ahead of me, and now I gotta talk about water rates. Now, I enjoy talking about water and sewer rates, but almost nobody else does, and especially those who are gonna have to pay almost always higher water and sewer rates. They really don't want to talk about this, but it is something that we have to do once in a while because utilities are just like the rest of us in our households. Inflation happens. We need to buy a new car. We need to do something to the house. Expenses happen, some of them out of the ordinary, and we as households have to cover them in some sort of way. Utilities need to do the same thing. Utilities experience cost increases unusual, or at least very infrequent, big expenses. Uh, so we have to roll with punches and take care of things. Utilities are different from our personal finances, though, in this way. If we individually mismanage our money, if we run up the credit cards, if we do things like that that we cannot pay for, mostly just we suffer the consequences. If a utility goes broke, if the utility needs to make big improvements that it can't afford to make on the current rates, if the utility is not keeping up with inflation, then the utility has a hard time being able to function right. There are lots and lots of homeowners, lots of business owners, other folks who invested in your service area based on a lot of assumptions. One of them is, hey, there was water here before, there was sewer here before, so I can count on it. I don't need to worry about running out of water or not having sewer service and having that corrode the value of my investment. Utilities are different in that way. Uh, utilities pretty much need to function twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. Maybe a few outages for various reasons, a line break or something, but you get back into service pretty soon. In order to be able to do those sorts of things, you have to have enough money to operate. You have to have enough money to be able to cover unusual, like line break type stuff. And you have to have enough money when the time comes for capital improvements to come up with either cash-paid capital improvements or to be able to pay debt service, if you're gonna have to borrow to pay for capital improvements. So utilities are like us, but utilities need to be even more responsible than we need to be. Uh, so that's where you all are at, uh, at this point. With sewer, back in twenty twenty-one, I think it was, you did adjust your rates then. You haven't, you haven't done what I consider to be inflationary increases since then. On the water side, you didn't do the initial adjustments or inflationary adjustments, and the bills are coming due now. Or the, the lack of complete funding to be able to pay the bills as they come due. Uh, so you're, you're reaching a point pretty soon where you're gonna have to cut some things which are really serious to cut and might jeopardize the service. So you need to get back on track with costs. The supplemental analysis that I did, which is not a full rate analysis, but the supplemental, is aimed at getting you back on track. So, quick intro of me after I introduced the situation. I am a utility rate analyst, president of angryrates.com. I've been doing this work as a consulting analyst since two thousand and five. As of today, I've done three hundred and ninety-nine of these things. So I've done quite a few analyses. I was around the block a lot before I did this as a consultant too, though. I used to work for the Missouri Department of Natural Resources. It's like the Department of Health in Kansas. It has the state revolving fund loan programs. It has grant programs. It has permitting enforcement, all those sorts of things for water and sewer utilities, and a lot of other stuff, too. Uh, Missouri DNR was that same sort of, uh, uh, agency, and in that agency, most of my fourteen years had to do with helping local governments to solve environmental or public health problems. Mostly, I worked with water and sewer utilities. My unit worked with water and sewer utilities, mostly owned by towns and cities. We helped them to get into compliance if they were out, to stay in compliance once they were there. If they needed money to be able to get into compliance, we lent it to them, we granted it to them. I did grants and loans for a while, and then I just helped folks on the technical side. Most of that had to do with calculating rates that they would need to be able to stay in compliance, get in compliance, satisfy permit requirements, all those sorts of things. So I've worked in the realm of utility finance for quite a few years before I stepped away from state government, uh, just to do rate analysis. I tell folks almost every time I talk to them in a situation like this, I worked for Missouri DNR for fourteen years. I enjoyed almost every hour of almost every day, and I haven't missed a day since. And I really haven't missed a day since, because I'm not really a dyed-in-the-wool regulatory guy. I'm really more of a helping kind of guy. Uh, I wanted to help more than what the agency really wanted me to help, so there was a natural part of the ways uh, for me to go out and consult. So I really enjoy helping folks like you all figure out what your problems are, and then figure out how to solve those. Regardless whether they have to do with grants and loans, or the Department of Health, or whatever else it is. If it has to do with money and rate setting, and the two are just like Siamese twins, almost all of the utility money that you collect is from user charge fees and possibly a bit from connection fees. So you're self-funded, funded almost one hundred percent in utilities. I did a full rate analysis for water and sewer back in twenty twenty, and the project on my side wrapped up just barely into twenty twenty-one. I saw that the last report was dated, I think it was January twenty twenty-one. Now we're in twenty twenty-five. Uh, so we, we've had a COVID thing happen to us, um, at the beginning and toward the end of my time helping you all. COVID really did wreck the finances of a lot of water and sewer systems. Lots of expenses came along, or expenses that were already there just really jumped up. I'm actually amazed that you all are financially doing as well as you are doing right now, having not raised water rates at all, and having only done the initial adjustments on the wastewater side. I really am amazed that you have done so well. Uh, I suspect that's a testament to your ability to be able to tighten the belt, and probably a testament to an operator or two who are really good with duct tape and baling wire and things like that. Uh, but we can't do that forever. Uh, eventually, when you have something that needs to be addressed, you gotta go beyond duct tape and baling wire. You gotta do a real fix. I bet you're getting to the point to where that's coming down the pike. Now, I heard several questions asked, and I made myself some cryptic notes, and I'll address those here just a little bit. But I want to take you through, uh, the supplemental report to show you just a few of the highlights or the pieces that you mostly should focus on. There's a lot of verbiage in the narrative, ten or twelve pages. Some of those that I recommend you adopt as soon as you can. So those are rates for twenty twenty-five. Some of it is a little bit of an instruction in how to do that. But back in the twenty twenty-one report, I gave you probably almost word for word for those same kinds of instructions. My basically been having exploration for a pretty long time, but some pretty strong for inflation two and three or so years ago. We're still having stronger than what the Fed really wants to see for inflation. Uh, so inflation's gonna happen to you all, too. Uh, we may have current events that will really cause a lot of inflation. We'll see how it all pans out, but inflation will happen. You need to cover it as it comes along. The initial adjustments are not designed to last you forever. They're really only designed to get your rates structured correctly right now and to get them current with current costs. So I'm going to run back to the beginning of the report and show you a few pages, and I'll share those. But I think you all probably have the report in front of you, don't you?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, did you see Water and Sewer Rate Analysis Report Supplement One?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, just the cover page and the table of contents and so forth, the, the initial stuff that I want to point out in a report. I'll, I'll leave that to you all to read on that. If you've not read on it real seriously, if you, I have a rate analyst in the ride, or I'd love it if you've read this six times already, but I'm betting that you haven't. But after this meeting and after my discussion, I'd like for you to go back and especially hit those parts that I brought up tonight, because having heard it and then reading it, uh, in the report again will probably kind of crystallize it in your mind pretty well. will probably kind of crystallize it in your mind pretty well. I want to start, though, at the Water Model 1 or the Water Model. The model is just simply a giant set of calculations. The Water Model, I take on first, and then I do Sewer after that. And the Narrative Report is more verbose in the Water Model section because I explained some more things. In the Wastewater section, since I've already explained things in the water side, over on the wastewater side, the notions are almost all the same. So I don't repeat those sorts of things. I mostly just tell you what's different in the Sewer subsection. So the Water Model 1 rates section kind of describes to you the main tables that I've printed out from the Water Model. A little explanation. The Water Model and the Sewer Model, they are both the models from back in 2021, but then just updated in a few places for balance and expenses. I think inflation, I updated. I updated the Census Bureau's estimation of median household income because there's since been a newer estimation for 2023. So I've updated a few key parts. And I described those things in the sections where you see Table 4, Page 15, Table 5, and so on. Each one of those tables does different parts of the calculations or shows you the results of calculations. Table 10 is where I actually calculate the rates that are needed. Table 17 is the results of these rates that I've recommended. So how they affect rate affordability and things like that. I'm going to get to these tables in just a little bit, but I'll continue through the narrative. Table 18 compares what will happen to customers of different kinds in using different volumes of water or different volumes of sewer service. What will happen to their bills compared to what their bills are right now? And then I have some charts which I'll point out what I consider to be a really fascinating feature of those charts. It's one which, by the way, I've never seen in my charts before because your situation is a different one. And that is, I recommended rates five years ago. You didn't do those rates five years ago and up till now, except for just the initial adjustments in sewer. And then I adjusted in this year your balances, your operating expenses, and a few other things. So I adjusted those this year, and the charts show the effect of those adjustments making them in just some individual years. In this section, recommendations for adopting Water Model 1 rates, and that's just like if you were around on the council back in 2021, you saw that same sort of set of recommendations about how to go about this. There's a lot more that you have to do than what I'm talking about. You've got some legal things and so forth. But on just the adjusting rates part, that's what these instructions are about. Tables A and B for water are recommended rates. And those follow right here. Now, I'll go through a comparison of bills here in a little while when I get to the models themselves. But these are the rates that I recommend that you actually adopt. So for a 0.625, that's a 5/8 inch meter. For a 5/8 inch meter, the connection fee, or I call that a system development fee, and then you all can tack on whatever you need to to pay for actual out-of-pocket connection costs. So just the system development fee, the buy-in of capacity of the system. That's $2,107 for the first three sizes of meters, 5/8ths, 3/4ths, and 1 inch. That takes in, if not all, almost all residential customers. And then after that, that fee starts to go up. So for 1 1/2, it's $6,322. On the user charge side, for a 5/8ths, basically a residential customer, 5/8ths inch meter, minimum charge $26.63. You have three ranges of unit charges, and they go up as volume goes up. Those are called conservation rates. The notion is if folks pay more when they use more incrementally, they will be more inclined to think about not using more. Prices send us signals. So the first tier, 0 to 1 gallon below $10,000, it would be $8.67 per 1,000 gallons. For the next tier, 12, 14, for the highest tier, 15,000 and greater gallons, it would be $18.22. I calculated those ranges. Well, the ranges are what you have right now. And I calculated those unit charges in proportion to what your unit charges are like right now. So the level of all of the unit charges went up in concert in the same pattern that you have right now. But they went up the dollar amount to be able to generate enough revenue so that after these folks paying $26.63 for the minimum, these unit charges pay their share of the variable costs of the system. And that's the notion that we analysts say lead you to cost of service or cost-to-serv rates. You can see the unit charges, they vary with volume, but they don't vary with meter size or with different kinds of customers. They're the same for all of the customers. The minimum charge is the part that changes. For a 4-inch single-meter, or if you want to simplify that and just apply that rate to all 4-inch meters, the minimum charge for a 4-inch meter would be $65.26 per month compared to the $26.63 for the first three sizes. That variance, that additional or that surcharge as meter size goes up takes into account that you incur, you, the utility, incur more system capacity costs, peak-flow capacity costs as meter size goes up. So as the... And I picked on the 4-inch meter size purposely because the 4-inch meter has 25 times more sustainable peak-flow capacity than a 5/8 inch meter has. So the capacity costs per share of peak-flow capacity of a meter should, in a cost-to-serv structure, should pay for that meter size's share of capacity costs. So a 4-inch meter pays 25 shares of capacity cost on top of the basic cost, which is a little bit less than $26 per month because even the 5/8 inch meter has one share of capacity cost. So you add the 25 shares of capacity to the base minimum charge or base fixed cost to arrive at that $65.26. That's the rates for in-town. Rates for out-of-town is Table B, and those are 25% higher than the in-town rates. Basically, what those do is they take in out-of-town rates, take into account that in most respects, it costs the utility more to serve one customer who lives outside of your jurisdiction, outside of the city limits. Almost by default, they are farther away. So it takes more line length. And then it takes more electric, push water. And it takes more of lots of things to serve someone outside of town than someone inside. You have a 25% premium for out-of-town service, which is pretty common. And I stuck with that 25% premium. I see 25% all the way up to double for outside-of-town service. But I didn't want to get all wild since you were needing to do adjustments. I wanted to keep it mild, so I went with the 25% differential. Tables A and B, those are the water rates that I recommend. The Sewer Model rates, you see that these descriptions of the tables are much shorter because I'm relying upon what you already read before about each table. I just tell you what's different. Basically, just the statistics, the data, the outcomes. Table C is for sewer rates. So they're structured the same sort of way. 5/8ths inch meter. Meter size works well for billing sewer service when you also have water service going to all or almost all sewer customers. And that's the case with almost all towns. So a 5/8ths inch meter, connection fee $2,022, that's a little different than that for water because the system capacity cost of sewer is different than water, almost always more expensive. Minimum charge, $25.41 per month for a 5/8ths, all the way up to a 1-inch meter. So folks would pay $25.41, and on top of that, they would pay $11.15 per 1,000 gallons of sewer service that they use. And then that unit charge, is what we call that, the unit charge stays the same regardless of meter size or customer type or things like that. You don't have out-of-town sewer customers to speak of. Actually, I don't think you have any. But I went ahead and calculated what the out-of-town rates, connection and minimum unit charges would be if you did have them. And again, that's 25% more than in-town. Now, does anybody have any questions just about narrative before I move to the models and kind of show you where all this stuff came from?
Careful questions? Yeah, all right. Thank you so much. Keep going.
Okay, we'll forge ahead. This is the Water Model. Now, the original Water Model had a lot of tables, all the way up to 18. I may have had 19 in yours. I do some statistics in Table 19. I can't remember if I gave you Table 19 or not, but I know I at least gave you up to Table 18. And my memory seems to serve that you got 1 through 18. You got all of the tables. In the supplemental report, since I'm only adjusting a few of the criteria, operating cost, ending balance, the affordability index because of the change in the rates, but also because of the change in what the Census Bureau says your median household income is now. I only changed a few criteria. Otherwise, the criteria is the same as the original model. So I didn't print out. All of those other tables would just tell you the same things that you would have read or you can read in the reprint of that report from 2021. I'm trying to keep it short and pretty brief, pretty easy to digest. So incomes-wise, which is Table 3. Those are the same incomes that you had from before except for the incomes that the new rates now starting in 2025 would start to generate. Table 4, operating costs. And someone asked about the Wichita water rates. These are those same costs except I adjusted a few in 2025. One was, and this was based on what your city manager, Matt, told me, the increase in Wichita's water rate for you all, it either went up or it's going to go up. That's in 2024, the green highlighted dollar amount. That was adjusted to handle that increase. As I recall, Matt told me that it was going to be 6% or 6 1/4%. It's 6 something.
That's correct.
And we had already planned on a 5% increase originally. So you all, I already had that built into your rates back then. So most of that bill increase was already covered by also the new rates. We just needed to cover the extra 1 1/4, 1 1/2%. Maybe Matt can chime in and tell me what that percentage was.
That was correct. It was 6 and 3/4%.
Yeah.
Yeah, 6 and 3/4%.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
And you had said, you had said, Carl, that you had, I believe, 5% built into there. So we would just need to adjust those by 1.75%.
That's right. So the rates in Tables A, B, and C, Matt and I figured it wasn't, you know, we're rewriting everything to get that 6 and 3/4% as opposed to 5. You all are going to find out in a year or two that some things are going to turn out not like what we had in the original model or this adjusted model. And there's not any problem with that. That's just the way it works. So the extra 1.75% increase in that bill, you don't actually have to increase your overall rates by a whole 1.75%. You simply add 1.75% to this $289,945. So that will become about $300,000 or so. You add that many dollars to the total operating expense of $554,000. So you're going to have an extra $10,000, $12,000 or so thousand dollars in expense divided by $554,000. So that's going to be 1/5th or... The math in my head is kind of failing me here, but it's going to be way less than 1%. So we've already accounted for all of the other expenses plus most of the Wichita increase. And then going forward, the Wichita increase is still going to be at 5%. That's what's in the model. I don't know where Wichita will go after this year. But if you all find out sometime this year that they're going to go 7 1/2%, then you do the same math. The difference, the dollar difference between the 5% and the 7 1/2% would be $15,000, $20,000. Divide that by the $608,000, which will be your expenses next year. You do that sort of math. If you hit a bump in the road, Matt can always give me a call and I can walk you all through that. The other change, and this is the important change, is the cumulative expense reduction that you all have been making in your budget, how you have actually been spending money compared to where you were at back in 2020 and how I thought you would progress. and how I thought you would progress to now. So you ended up reducing your expenses compared to what I had modeled for 2025, or actually it's 2024, by $158,000 and change. So in the original model that I've now adjusted, I've entered that cost reduction. I just entered the total. We didn't look at individual expenses. We just looked at the total budget reduction, $158,000 and change. A similar adjustment for capital improvements. Now, there was a question about capital improvements, about whether these rates will pay for capital improvements, I think was the gist of the question. And it will pay for debt service that you now have. But there is no expense increase for booster station and your own supporting improvements. I don't know what that project is. But that, this model assumes that you don't do that project. I assume that you probably haven't done it yet, but it assumes that you won't do it in the next five or six years. And since on my books, it's not an expense, or at least an expense yet, then it's not something that needs to be covered. We either cover actual expenses or assumed expenses. And I don't know of an assumption that you would end up needing to do that project. So in the, on the water side, no, there is not a capital improvement planned into the rates. So again, if you actually do come up with capital improvement needs, really the thing to do is to reanalyze if that becomes the event. Because if you spend millions of dollars and if some of it is borrowed, so maybe you don't spend millions in cash, but you increase your annual debt service by a quarter million bucks or something like that, that will change your cost structure so much that the structure of the rates really should be adjusted then too. Plus, it really helps to have the projection going 10 years out beyond or at least enclosing a capital improvement of that sort of magnitude. So the short and sweet of it is, on water, no capital improvements. I can't recall on sewer, but we'll get there in just a little bit. So an adjustment to the balance for capital improvements. And that worked out to an adjusted balance of $71,371. You can see that the year before, were you to continue to accrue balances as I had projected with the rates from 2021, you'd have $515,000 in the bank. So you're lopping off $450,000 or so of your balance because inflation happened through the years and you did not increase rates for a while. So those are capital improvements. Table eight is just about rate structuring. So this is, this is how I arrive at cost to serve rates. You see that adjustment for the negative $158,000? The overall costs are above. And then this 158 brings it back down to where you've actually been performing for costs. You're doing better than what I thought you would. Table 10 is where I calculate the rates. And so you see what it would be at. No use, so the minimum charge only. Unit charge, 880. So if somebody uses 100 gallons and you bill per 100 gallons, then they would use 1/10 of 880. They'd have a unit, a unit charge bill of 88 cents on top of the minimum. 11 bucks for 10,000 to one shy of 15,000, 1650 for above that. Now, that is the minimum unit charges. In a future year, I discount those back based on inflation to the test year, which was back in 2020. And then I bring the rates forward each year to cover inflation. So I go out into the future to see what your costs are going to be like. I went for it out to be able to see what your new costs are like. But future costs discounted back and then brought back forward based on inflation across the board, the 2% thing, to arrive at the rates that are in tables A and B. And then C for sewer, based on its set of calculations. All right, so that's table 10. Now we get into results, table 17. This 102,000 highlighted yellow, 102,000 and change. You can see the back in 2019, the median household income in Kichai was estimated by the Census Bureau, And then the Census Bureau also assumes inflation growth in median household income. So I grossed up the income through the years and it would have been, or had been, probably 115,000 per household or somewhere in that vicinity, based on that trajectory. But then Census Bureau did another survey and estimated median household income in 2023, not at 115,000 or so. It didn't rise that fast. It went up to 102,794. So not too much more than it was back in 2019. So I adjusted income down in the yellow highlighted box. And based on the rates that it would take for a customer, residential customer using 5,000 gallons of water every month, in 2025, that would be $63.67. The affordability index of that bill on that income is 0.69%. Here's a way to think of that. It is believed by us rate analysts and a lot of finance people and economists that the affordability index of water bills and also sewer bills in this country is and tends to stay about 1%. That means that, I'll use easy terms, the average residential household, whatever it is that they make on average around the country, you average them all together. And we spend 1% of our income to pay our water bill and 1% of our income to pay our sewer bill. You will be, if all these numbers are correct, now that one is correct. The 102, that's, it's an estimate. Who knows what it really is? But according to the calculation of affordability, you're about 0.3% cheaper on that basis for your water bill than what the national average is, even after you would adopt the rates that I have in tables A and B. That's for water. We've got different results for sewer. And then when it comes to balances, we had to adjust your balances down in 2024. So the yellow highlighted boxes in the lower part of this table, do that and arrive at a sum of all balances after all those adjustments of $107,58. So I'm hoping that at the end of 2024, that's approximately what you had in reserves in the water fund. Table 18 compares bills for different volumes and for different customers. I only showed the one inch meter and smaller. Those all have the same minimum charge. Smaller in city and then one inch and smaller throughout the city. And that takes in almost all of your customers. You got a few that have bigger meters, but not very many. So to pay the minimum charge, your minimum now is $22 a month. The minimum would actually go down a little bit. So if somebody did not use any water one month and they just paid their minimum charge bill, their bill would be $2.33 cheaper for that month. Now, you probably don't have hardly any customers that don't use any volume. They're hooked up to water because they need to use water. And most of your customers average between 5,000 and 6,000 gallons. So their bill on the low end would be 63, 67, on the higher end, 72, 47, for increases of about $12 to $15 a month. So those folks, especially the 5,000 gallon per month customer, that even after that increase, their affordability index is still only 0.69%. They're still using three basis points less of their income to pay their water bill than what we think the national average is. So your, your water rates right now are pretty cheap on that basis. On the dollar basis, they're kind of high. Your, your income is much higher than most other cities and towns, probably in your vicinity. Now, I'm sure that Wichita has other suburb cities where they make, you know, more than 100,000 bucks like you guys. But with a median household income in the vicinity of $100,000, your affordability index is actually pretty darn much. That's table 18. Now we're to the charts. And by the way, it's not going to take here so long to cover sewer because the same sort of things apply on the wastewater side. You see that in 2025, the blue line, the proposed rates, those are the rates in tables A and B, the coverage ratio, which is your ability to be able to pay debt. It's a, it's a criteria that finance folks, that lenders look at. They want you to have a good, strong coverage ratio. Above one, your coverage ratio would dip below one by a bit. That one year, but that's just because I arbitrarily made all of the expense and balance adjustments in 2024. So right after 2024, '25 is when that hits the works. Your coverage ratio drops below one. But it recovers soon. It'll stay above one for a few years. In the out years, because we're not quite keeping up with inflation, you're going to end up below one again if you were to stay with those rates. Another place where that really shows, working capital really shows. But chart eight is your total reserves. You see the blue line is taking a roller coaster ride. The blue line depicts total reserves. So back in 2019, you had about $400,000, about $500,000. With the adjustments that I made in this model for the first few years, you drove those reserves up to almost 800,000. That big adjustment in balances happened and it drew down to about, it was 100,000 and a little bit of change. And then with these new rates and also inflationary increases, you will grow out of that situation. So you'll grow back up to just a little bit shy of $600,000 in reserves by the 10th year, which is only five years from now. Any questions on modeling for water? I've probably snuck you pretty good with a whole lot of data and things like that.
Questions, council? We're good. Continue.
Okay, and back to a couple of questions that I heard before. What, what will the percentage? I think the person asked about the percentage increases for different volumes of use. I don't have the percentage increase in this table. Say that again?
It was Siri. Siri wanted to talk to us. It's fine. You're good. Continue.
Anyway, this percentage increase is going to be negative. It's going to be a negative $2.33 divided by the original dollar amount, $22. For 5,000 gallons, it'd be 1222 divided by 5145. So that's going to be a bit more than 20%. You see it varies because the unit charge needed, the minimum charge actually needed to go down a little bit. And the unit charge needed to go up. And that means especially the escalator for the high volumes of use, that, that change really shows big time. If somebody uses 15,000 gallons, their bill would go up. By roughly the dollar amount, the bill would be at 5,000 gallons. So if somebody is watering the lawn, not even a whole lot, but watering the lawn, watering the lawn kind of regular, they're going to see something like a $65 bill increase. So that table doesn't show you percentages. It shows you dollars. And then when it comes to increases in the rates themselves, tables A and B show you where the rates need to go as soon as you can operate. You can finagle with some of the numbers. If, if a unit charge is $12.23 per thousand, I invite you to round that to $12.25. Make the math easier on you all. Generally rounded up rather than down unless it's $12.21. Grounding down to 1220 is not going to be a killer for revenue. But most of the time you want to round up if you're round. But based on just the rates that I calculated, I didn't finagle with the numbers. They just worked out to the individual pennies just the way they did. If you adopt those rates, then the bill adjustments would be like in table 18. So back to table eight or chart eight. We've got the roller coaster ride in blue set of rates. The red set of rates, those are your current rates. So if you don't adjust rates, then in about 2028, you'll go broke. And then you'll be very broke in 2030. So you don't have a whole lot of time to right the ship. That's water. Sewer model. There were incomes. There were expenses. There's an adjustment to the cumulative, to reflect the cumulative reserves in the sewer fund, only $64,000 on the wastewater side. I suspect that a lot of that has to do with the fact that you, you did adjust the sewer rates initially. So at least you started with the higher rates and you just didn't keep up with inflation. Now, there was a question about capital improvements. On the wastewater side, there was a $1.6 million additional sewer depth for sewer relining, it looks like. That's covered. I don't know if you've done, or if you did a $1.6 million project. But the rates that I've calculated would cover the debt service for that $1.6 billion. Table eight is a calculation of the rate structure. Table 10 is where I calculate the actual rates that you need. And then we get into outcomes. Again, the yellow highlighted median household income, that applies to sewer too. So I adjusted that income. The, in twenty twenty-five, the bill for five thousand gallons for this kind of customer would be eighty-one dollars and seventeen cents per month. So for five thousand gallons, they'd pay that amount. The affordability index, remember that on the water side, it was point six nine percent? It was well below one percent. On the wastewater side, basically since your bill is already closer to where it needs to be, doesn't need to go up as much, but it's because it's higher starting off, the affordability index would be point eight nine percent, but still less than the national average. Reserves would be less, total reserves would be less than what they have been running, but not as much less as on the water side. Again, because of the initial adjustments that you did. The minimum charge, and, and this is just chance, the minimum charge worked out to be very close to what the minimum charge for water came out to be. Twenty-two oh four, but that's what it was, excuse me. And then the, the new bill for no use, just the minimum's twenty-five forty-one. Or in this case, an increase of three thirty-one. All of the bills would increase on the in-town side. Out of town, they would go down just slightly to stick with cost to serve and a twenty-five percent premium for out of town. You only have one out of town customer. So it's, it's revenue wise, it's immaterial, uh, where you end up setting those rates. But on the basis of having fairly structured rates, you would want to go ahead and if that customer used no volume, you would want their bill to go down by about thirty. Those are bill comparisons. And then for the charts, working capital, you see a little bit of a drop in twenty twenty-four, but you're right back up to where you should be for working capital, that dark line, the goal line. Same thing on cash. The important one is chart eight. Remember it was a really big roller coaster ride for the blue line in the water total reserves. The total reserves for sewer are not going to be affected as much because you did adjust rates back in twenty twenty-one. So you're closer to where you needed to be even now. You don't need to raise rates as much. It drops off a bit in twenty twenty-four, but then it starts to grow again to a bit higher than where it started in twenty nineteen. So you're going to pay more expense overall, uh, but you'll end up with a bit more reserve. All right, kind of that's the end of the dog and pony show of rate modeling. Uh, table C is what tells you where I calculated your sewer rate should be. Tables A and B, water rates should be. The more critical one is water because you have already at least done five years ago, the initial sewer rate adjustment. I, I'd still recommend that you go ahead and do the adjustments for sewer. Continue with the two percent annual intre- increase. But if you slide on anything, uh, don't let it be water. Uh, water needs to pick up or you'll, you'll go broke in water freezing. All right, uh, incremental Wichita increases on water, yes, those are covered. And growth is covered. So I'm assuming that you will have growth. And that growth will end up helping you, even though it will boost expenses some, it will boost revenue more because you, you will produce net revenue at the new rates. Uh, so growth that I calculate, that I assume would happen is this line. Customers added or lost each year. In the test year twenty nineteen, you added forty-five, you added a bunch. In twenty twenty, we figured it'd still be that. And then, uh, working with the city manager from back then, uh, she or maybe it was I, both figured that you would have fewer uh, new connections for five years. And then you would have half of that from there on out. So it'd be thirty-four per year and that would be through even now, thirty-four per year. And then in twenty-six and beyond, it would drop down to half of that, seventeen new connections per year. Uh, my vague memory from back then was, uh, I wouldn't call it, I wouldn't say you all are built out, but you don't have lots and lots of available acreage for building brand new subdivisions and stuff like that. Uh, so I think that was the reasoning for the drop off in new growth. But the rates take into account, they assume that you're going to grow quite a few new customers and they will help you to pay for the expenses as they go up, but they don't go up as fast as the growth rate in new customer. All right, uh, questions?
Questions for Carl?
Um, you may have covered this already and I might have missed it, but I wanted to, um, talk about what expenses are driving, um, driving this? Is it inflation or are there other expenses involved that are driving this?
Uh, now, what, what is driving the need for new and higher rates in water?
Correct.
Uh, it is inflation. Uh, it's, it's not capital improvements because you, you didn't have capital improvements on the books back then and, and more recently, I believe I was told that that's not in the works. Or if that wasn't the case, I was keeping you the, I'll call it the cheap side of new rates that you need to adopt. Um, I did that on purpose. Um, five years ago, I gave you an assumption that if you have capital improvements like this, or if you have no capital improvements, you need these rates. If you do end up having capital improvement needs or other cost needs, uh, then the rates would need to be this other, uh, set and those would be higher. Uh, you, you didn't adjust rates back then, even at the, assuming no capital improvement needs. Uh, so I figured that's probably a good floor to start with. And then if capital improvement needs come along, didn't we deal with that? Or you all may be able to deal with that just on a percentage of cost basis?
Thank you.
Okay, other questions?
Do we know how many new connections we had from twenty-one to twenty-four? I mean, we assumed thirty-four in the study.
Yeah, we had to pull those. I don't think we had that many.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah, it was lower than that.
The, the other question I had is, and maybe for Carl, is how, how do you figure the, um, usage volume on sewer? Because we don't meter that, like we do a water meter.
How do we figure it?
Or, or what do we use?
We take the winter average?
Winter average, I think.
It's your December usage, your January usage and your February usage of water. And we take the average of those three months and that is your sewer for the rest of the year.
Calculate the sewer up like that, okay.
Other questions?
Oops. Yeah, and I'm going to scroll back to sewer. Uh, recall that, uh, in the water table eighteen, I highlighted in gold five and six thousand gallons because your, your average use, water use was between five and six thousand. Uh, I, in the model, I know exactly what the average was. I just don't have it shown here and summarized. And then in sewer, it's between three and four thousand. So what that reflects is your custo- your water customers use more water in the summertime than they do in the winter. They're outside watering and hosing off the sidewalk and doing whatever they do. Uh, they use more water in the summer than the winter. That water that they get, that they use outside, that does not go back into the sewer. So the notion behind winter average billing, at least for residential customers, is to give them credit for volume that they don't put back down in the sewer all year long. Because in the summertime, it goes outside, it doesn't stay inside, go back into the sewer. So you can see there's, just by those ranges, three to four for sewer and five to six for water. That gives folks credit, uh, for what doesn't go back into the sewer in their sewer bill. They're only paying for three thousand gallons instead of five, if that's what their difference is. And it's based on each customer's winter average use. So you do that calculation once a year, uh, calculate what the unit charges need to be based on a volume at the minimum, and that's their bill. They pay that same amount every month for sewer. Water varies though, depending on what they use. Okay, other questions?
The other question I had was on the, on the water, uh, I believe it was table eighteen. And one of them, we said we had a hundred and eight, hundred and nine thousand or a hundred and eight thousand. It was different every year for debt service water. Do you know what that is?
Carl, can you go back to that?
Yeah, I'm going to, that, that's actually table five is where I cover debt service. Uh, eighty-eight thousand nine forty-two in the test year was your debt.
Carl, it was on the, Carl, excuse me, it was on the supply, water supply, not the sewer.
It, it was on the-
No, it's here, I'm sorry.
It was on the water side.
Then scroll back far enough. All right, so yeah, there you, you had that number, all right. Hundred and eight thousand five hundred and sixty-three bucks. And then that varies a little bit. Uh, I actually got your, your debt, uh, payment schedule or whatever this debt is. Uh, so it, it varies just a little bit from year to year. In twenty twenty-five, it'll be pretty close to what it was. Well, actually it'll be the same as what it was in the test year. And you see it still varies a little bit going out in the future. But that, whatever that debt issue was, it will have payments for the entire ten years. It's not going to be paid off during this modeling process. It's the only debt that I knew of.
Yeah, I, I haven't been back to look at it in recent times, but I'm sure that we've got bond issues outstanding where a portion of that was for water and sewer main projects that were allocated to the, you know, a portion to the, the utility itself. And that's what that is. And, and to the extent it's varying from one year to another, that's likely just due to interest rate changes. So sometimes the interest rates from year to year are the same based on how they got issued. And sometimes they may change from the short term to the long term. So you may see a year where the interest changes.
Sure.
That's why the payment is-
That was my question is what, what was that debt and its developments?
Right.
Or is it just-
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Any further questions?
I may have missed it, but how many connections moving forward are we averaging or predicting per year?
Well, I don't know if I have a good answer for that. A lot of it depends on development. Yeah. So it could be two, it could be a hundred. It just depends on what happens with some of this future development.
So then if I'm to understand this correctly, do they unit connections that were before, um, was that a prediction or an actual number?
I believe that was a nu- that was probably rock point. Had to do with rock point, I would imagine, Thomas. Forty-five was actually in twenty nineteen, yeah.
But to the extent they put thirty-four connections in every year for five years, I think that was a prediction.
That was correct.
And that was more, I guess to the point of my question was, do we have a prediction moving forward?
No, we don't, no. Now, we, we will have a prediction once maybe some of these newer developments solidify, uh, they come to fruition, we can provide those numbers. But right now, it's just, we could throw a number at you, but it probably would not be for that.
Sure.
I have another question.
Uh, just, and I, I think it's in here, but the fifteen oh seven is still our residential hookup fee that you listed.
Uh, twenty-two dollars is-
No, no, the hookup, uh, installation fee is fifteen oh seven.
It's not fifteen, it's twenty-
No, we increased those a little bit. They're more, they're more consistent with what Carl has in his model there.
Okay, closer to the twenty-one.
Closer to the twenty-one and there's been recent increases in our meters. So we know those will have to be adjusted.
I, I did have a question for Carl on that though, because that kind of surprised me. The twenty-one oh seven, is that just a fee for that tap? And that's not actually a fee for the connection, connection and the supplies that, for the work that's being done? So that would be a secondary charge, so that would be for like a, a benefit fee?
Yeah, benefit unit is what is real company, that's the term in Kansas that you have for system development costs or system development fee. I calculate the system development cost and then divvy that out to customers usually based on meter size, their peak flow capacity. And the, the twenty-one oh seven, I think you were saying that that came out to you, that twenty-one oh seven is only the buy-in of capacity that somebody share, for a small meter, that somebody's share of the capacity of the system to be able to provide service to them. That is not including the cost of permitting them to connect, the cost to get a meter, sell them a meter or whatever, the cost of inspecting, the, the piping and the connections and things like that before they bury it, the cost of trying to collect, the costs. It's not the cost of, the out-of-pocket costs to connect somebody. It's only the cost of capacity. So whatever you all figure you run into for out-of-pocket costs to allow someone to connect, you need to add that to the system development fees that I calculated.
All right, any further discussion for Carl? I haven't seen them. Thank you so much, Carl. Was there anything else you wanted to add? Sorry, I cut you off.
Yeah, let me, let me kind of sum up this way. Uh, if, if any of you do have a question or you just want to verify something or whatever, uh, if you could pass those questions on to Matt and then I'll rely on Matt to compile stuff together for me and, and send it. Uh, and I, I do that for a couple of reasons. One is two or three of you might have kind of the same question. And so I'd much rather have Matt, you know, congeal that all into one overarching question than for me to try to answer three slightly different versions of that question. And then the other reason why I do that, and I'm, I'm thinking from what I hear from you guys, that this is the case, and you, you're just a different group. But I have had before a few boards, uh, mostly water district boards, it seems. But I have had a few councils where a council member or a board member kind of went rogue on the rate structure. And they wanted a rate structure that was different than cost to serve that I came up with or even something else that the mayor or somebody said, you know, we needed to go for. Uh, they came up with something different and they said, hey, you know, we, we talked about it in the last council meeting and we all decided that we needed to have you do this to the minimum and that to the unit charge. So then I work it up and I do a supplemental report and send it out. And of course that goes to my main contact, see administrator, whoever. And then that gets passed on to the council, and the mayor says, hey, we never asked for that. How come you did that? And maybe it comes out, and maybe it doesn't. But I also guard against anybody going rogue by sending all other questions and things like that through my contact, Matt, in your case. Uh, so we can make sure everything's up and up. Uh, and especially so that I can make sure that I get all of the questions and deal and sent to me from one source. Uh, really, really helps in the communicating back and forth. It hasn't happened too many times in three hundred and ninety-nine analyses, but it, it has happened a handful of times. Uh, so I, I try to guard against that for your all's benefit. And it also helps me too, because I, I don't want to end up doing a bunch of analyses that some rogues decided they wanted, but which is not what the council really wanted.
Sounds like a good plan.
Okay.
So Car- Carl, before you get off there, I just want to clarify one thing with you and the council. Carl and I talked that we do, we anticipate that we are going to have some capital projects with utilities in the future. However, we don't know the true cost of those today, okay? We need to make rate adjustments today to get, make sure that our system, our utility is solvent. And as Carl and I discussed, and Carl, correct me if I'm, if I'm speaking out of turn, when we have those figures and decide what direction we're going for those system improvements, that would be the time to do a complete rate analysis, rather than a rate update like this.
Yes, that, and then also, don't hold off on doing the adjustment you need right now just to pay your current cost, waiting for another two or three years for an engineer to tell you how much it's going to cost to build such and such improvement. Uh, because you're deeper in the hole starting off, you're also a much worse-looking candidate for lending. If, if you don't have reserves, lender, I used to be a lender. Uh, if you don't have reserves, then lenders don't like the idea of lending to you. And they kind of don't like the idea of giving you a grant, if they're also in the grant business, because they're worried that, hey, these folks are so close to broke, that our grant investment is not going to be a good one. So you want to have strong reserves. Even if you're grant-eligible, you're probably not. But even if you're grant-eligible, you still want to have strong reserves. But you're going to have front-end costs doing a capital improvement. And you just need to have reserves to be prepared for things. Uh, so anyway, um, I'll let Matt gather stuff, if there is any. But I suggest that as soon as you can, vote on a proposed ordinance to adjust water, and hopefully sewer rates, so that you can get current, uh, get adequate with your current expenses. Do that as soon as you can. Uh, keep in mind that, as we've even been discussing, it, it appears that the rates that we're talking about right now are probably on the low end. They, they probably before long will need to be higher. Uh, so you, you need to get at least current with current expenses. I can help you in the future if you need it, but I bet for a lot of the stuff, before you get to the point where you're going to do a capital improvement, uh, you guys can, can handle percentage increases across the board to the rates that I've calculated for you. You can do that sort of thing for miscellaneous expense increases and stuff like that. So you probably really don't need me until it's capital improvements time again.
Thank you very much for your time, and we appreciate it. And anything else you need? Carl, before we link over?
No, I will touch base with Carl next week after this meeting. We'll refine these numbers. The current information that he presented tonight will be put on the website, so it's all visible to the public. And, uh, we will bring more information to you at the next council meeting, as far as recommended rates.
Thank you again, Carl. We appreciate you. Have a great night.
Well, you too, and I've enjoyed helping you twice now.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Alright, I'll sign off. See you.
Alright. Do you want to do the next item of business?
The next item of business is section eight, old business. Wichita Water and Sewer Agreements.
Mayor, council, before you are the Wichita Water and Sewer Agreements. They, both of these agreements expired at the end of the year. And prior to the end of the year, we started the process of going back and forth between our legal and Wichita's legal on redoing these contracts. I will start, I will go through some highlights of these. Andrew will chip in if he needs to, to help explain things a little bit here from the legal side. Let's start with the wholesale water agreement, and that should be the first one in your packet there. Couple of things to highlight on this agreement. So on the water side, originally, the agreement that we just came out of was a twenty-year agreement with Wichita. This new agreement, because we know that we need to look for additional water sources and not be one hundred percent dependent on Wichita, we negotiated this down to a ten-year rather than a twenty-year contract with Wichita. Now, there are some provisions in here within that ten years that, throughout this contract, we have, we have to purchase at least one-half of the volume of the water specified. Now, throughout this agreement, uh, Andrew, is it each calendar year or every two or three?
That what?
That we, we can review those rates?
Oh yeah, it's periodically. It's not every year though.
Yeah, every couple of years we can review those.
But I think the requirements are well below our actual, our actual purchasing-
They are.
Amounts.
Correct.
And it doesn't prevent us from supplementing our water from other sources by any means.
Right, right. And that's where I was going, is if we do find another water source throughout this ten years, we start drawing down what we use for Wichita, we can look at those, renegotiate those minimum amounts as we start to switch to another water source, if that's what we would choose to do. Am I saying that correctly?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Five years, everybody, everyone's used to you.
Well, as I'm reviewing this, you know, one of the concerns I have is my name spelled wrong, but it's Velazquez, not-
Is that correct?
Yeah, it's Velazquez on here, not Coleman's.
Oh.
It's right on the sewer.
That's how long, that's how long we've been going back and forth.
Half, I've had two weddings since then, so really, yeah.
So on page five, under Schedule of Projected Water Usage, this is our projected water usage for the next ten years. Pretty self-explanatory.
Questions, council?
If at any time we would have extremely rapid growth and go above those limits, come to the sewer agreement. The sewer agreement originally was twenty years. We left it at twenty years. There is a caveat to that. It is on page... I just realized these don't have page numbers. Uh, section eight point one, which is about two-thirds of the way through the document. Eight point one says the term of this agreement shall be twenty years. If you go down to eight point three, we can give Wichita three years' notice to terminate this agreement. So we don't have to stay in this agreement for twenty years if we, excuse me, make the decision to go somewhere else for sewer or build our own sewer plant. We know that today, we have capacity issues with how much we can discharge to Wichita, okay? A simple analogy is, in layman's terms, we have a pipe this big, and Wichita has a pipe this big, okay? We can only discharge so much to them. Because of that, it limits our growth, how much we can put into the system. So we know that we're going to have to look for another source, be it building our own water treatment facility, discharging to another utility, or whatever it may be, but we need to look at that. So this allows us to do that. It doesn't lock us into a contract for twenty years. If we find an additional, another source that's more viable and affordable to the city, we can give them three years' notice, start that process, and get out of the contract. One other thing we did, um, and this really took the most time, is we went through and changed the, what they call the wastewater flow rates. So how much we project that we will discharge over the next twenty years. The original formulas we had in there did not, they did not match with some of the master plans we had for the city. So we wanted them to mirror those projections in our master plans more closely. We reached out to PEC, they went through them. We went through them with staff, specifically Thomas in-house here, adjusted those, and those were resubmitted, and they had no issues with those. So, Andrew, anything else as far as highlights through these agreements?
For the most part, these are, aside from things that Matt just pointed out, these are pretty identical to the agreements we've been operating under for the past twenty years plus.
Council, any questions? Changes that you'd like to see, not that you want to go back again, but-
What's that?
I said, changes you want to see, not that you want to go back again and do that again.
I think-
I know.
Yeah, I think we have good agreements. I think we, the things we wanted in there, we got in there. Uh, there are protections from the city, as far as how much we can discharge and how much we will receive. So I'm confident in the, the agreements. I think Andrew is too, Thomas is, through Public Works and both the sewer and water utilities.
So we would be the first to sign, and then it'd be taken to Wichita through their signature? That would happen?
Yeah.
We don't need a motion or anything to-
No, you do.
We do, yeah. Yeah, the motion is in, on the agenda, I declare.
Do you still have that? Pull it up.
There's another document number?
Do you have a, do you have a top?
We don't need a document number, do we?
No, just, yeah, just say the water and sewer agreement.
Uh, make a motion to approve the wholesale, wholesale sanitary sewage treatment services contract and the wholesale water services contract as presented.
I'll say that.
I just want, want to make sure, do we need to say with the change of my last name where we go? Because it's technically my name. I mean, we get, we know that.
Yeah, we'll make sure it's correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure in the motion that we need to put that. Okay, so motion by Todd, second by Paul. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Harry's four L. Moving on to council reports. Do I have any council reports? Are there any myself and O'Neal May for day?
I have a short report from the park board.
Awesome, perfect.
So the park board met Monday evening, April seventh, and we discussed several items of, uh, business, including, um, we had Jack McCormick as a guest, um, who gave us a history of the park during his tenure, uh, on the board, which was, uh, very beneficial to us all. And then, um, we, uh, walked through some of the priorities that we, um, that they felt were important. And one was, uh, the playground equipment. There was quite a bit of discussion on the playground equipment. Um, and we will be continuing to pursue, um, working through, um, the needs, uh, of the, of the city and the children of the city, uh, for that playground space. And then the fitness court, um, I would like to report that the park, the park board unanimously agreed it is not a priority, and recommended, um, to the city council that we decline that grant. Uh, and then, uh, also, we talked about the berm on the north side of the park, um, as, uh, and starting to deteriorate significantly. And, um, so Chair Benton asked that the park, park board members consider the berm's purpose and what options are for the berm, um, and bring back some recommendations. Um, finally, we just, uh, we discussed the budget report as well. Um, there's approximately $267,000 set aside for the park, um, and then a small amount of revenue that comes from alcohol sales tax. Um, just a couple of other things on communications and bylaws, but nothing significant. So it was a great meeting, um, all members who were present. Um, so I look forward to see, uh, where we go from here.
Awesome. Thank you very much. O'Neal May for day, morning.
Alright, so first, I went to regional economic area partnership, where, um, we discussed, uh, high school internships. Uh, let's see, various, let's see, child abuse prevention. Uh, we also discussed, uh, uh, safe routes to school for children, and some, um, changing reaps, uh, future goals, and, um, some of that kind of thing. Then after that, after we ended, then we went to, um, then I went with the Public Works. I learned how to find gas lines and mark them. And I went with the police. I had a tour of the police station, and, um, ride around, um, the neighborhood of the police. And that's about it.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much for that report. We appreciate having you, and, uh, we hope you learned a lot. What's, what was your favorite thing that you got to do while you were mayor for a day?
Actually, I really enjoyed, uh, learning how to find gas.
Kind of a Public Works guy. Feel that. Good job. Thomas, was that you?
No, he got to go with Earl.
Earl.
Earl always liked-
The master. Okay. I get that. Okay. Um, anything you didn't like about government?
Well, that chicken, um-
Oh, the chicken salad sandwich was-
Yeah, I don't know why you put chicken in that.
Reap doesn't always have the best meal. Sorry, Marcy, if you're watching this. That's okay though. I, I understand. Um, council, any other reports? Alright, I will give mine brief one. Um, Mayor, Mayor, Mayor Willie, I've already talked about reap. Um, I did attend that, as I do chair that group. Um, same thing, we had some general conversation, high school internships. Uh, we did get to hear from the intern from the city of Sedwick. Um, subcommittees were formed to talk about water, mayor summit, and other general things. Um, Matt and I also met with Deputy County Manager Russ, uh, Rusty Leeds this morning, just to talk about general topics such as public safety and water. Other items I worked on, uh, child abuse prevention, I collected, uh, connected with other, um, Sedwick County representatives, attending county and, uh, other city council meetings, uh, resident concern emails, decisions regarding, uh, the intersection project, keeping up on, uh, phone calls and just various civic groups. Um, two announcements I have, again, I want to remind everybody, the Easter egg scrambler is April twelfth at two-thirty at Keachai City Park. And also a reminder that the Keachai Arts Council is doing their art supply drive to help support the Wichita Children's Home. Um, they are accepting donations here at Keachai City Hall in the bin in the lobby until April thirtieth. That's all I have. And council, um, we're on the last item, which is adjournment. Can I get in?
I have a couple things just before we go. I know, I'm not going to try to belabor things that-
You're fine, go ahead.
I know it's been a long meeting.
You're good.
I do want to reiterate that the intersection of Sixty-first and Oliver closes tomorrow. The construction will begin first thing Monday morning. The barricades will put up, be put up in anticipation of that because they cannot deliver the barricades on the same day that they start. Todd was in that meeting.
Yeah.
There's, if there was a hiccup, then it would delay the start of the construction project and could push it back a week or so. So the barricades will be set up in anticipation of that project. It also helps alert and train people that, hey, this is going to be shut down. Maybe thirty, I don't remember what the exact-
Maybe it's twenty.
Yeah, maybe it's twenty, yeah. I don't remember the exact time, but that is the only request for additional time that they have asked for. So still within the working days, and we anticipate if weather stays good, they're going to move forward on that project really quick. I do want to remind everybody, the reason- I do want to remind everybody, the reason that we are closing the intersection down is twofold. Number one, if we were to keep it half-open, if they were to work on half of it and let cars go on the other half and then switch, it's a lot more expensive. We incur a lot more expenses for that, specifically bringing equipment in and out, the additional traffic control devices. And number two, it adds to the time of the project. They said if we did not close it down, we would incur about three to four months additional construction time. And we certainly don't want that. We want to get it done as fast as we can. So. Took the recommendations from the engineers to close that down, get it done as quick as we can and get it back over. Any questions on that?
Same.
Okay. One last thing. I'm going to pass out our tentative budget calendar, which I promised you in the first meeting. We will post this. We will post this under our transparency tab on our city website as we have all of our other financial documents. So everything is there for people to see. Like I said, this is a tentative schedule. So we put out a tentative schedule, not a hard schedule, because we know council members could be sick. Everybody may not be able to attend. We may have to reschedule a meeting, but the first couple of dates there, we will have three different workshops. The first workshop will be on capital budget and goal setting. The second workshop will be just on utility funds. And then we will have a third workshop into June that will be special revenues and funds that specifically affect our mill levy. So we kind of broke it down this year, so we don't do everything at one time. We kind of, we're approaching it as breaking that budget down and just focusing on those specific areas. So I think that will help everybody understand a little bit, a little better.
Awesome. And yes.
June fifteenth is a Sunday?
Yeah.
Well, then we'll change it.
Unless you really, I mean, we could meet on a Sunday. We've met on the Saturday.
Sunday, okay. We'll, we'll get that changed. Good catch.
Yeah, that's Father's Day, nevermind.
Yeah. Well, okay, so that's, that's the day that property valuations are distributed, that's what was on the county's website. Or the state's website, whichever one.
It's not a meeting, it's a thing.
Yeah, it was just a date that was on there, on the schedule that was on there that I pulled it from, so. That's when we get it. So they may, they may just keep that date of June fifteenth, and then if it's a Sunday, we get it on Monday or Friday or something like that. So that's, yeah, that's probably why that date is the way it is. Yeah.
Okay, cool. Any other items?
For me? No.
Yeah. All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second. I have a motion by Karen, second by Kendra. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Chair is four L. We adjourn.